All right, we'd like to call our regular bourbon to order for April.
Yeah, they're not, I don't think they're necessarily four more.
Barb, can you do the roll?
Sure.
Mr. Beveridge?
We have called the main server.
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Mrs. Steele?
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
All right, will you please all rise for me for the Pledge of Allegiance and Presentation of Colors led by the Oregon Trail Middle School?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. McCallum?
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's Olathe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. The public comments meeting was held prior to the business meeting, which is now designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Patrons who stay for the remainder of the meeting after public comments do so in an observatory role. Please note that those who disrupt the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending and we'll proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McCallum. Okay, on to adoption of agenda 2.01.
I'd like to make a motion to adjust the agenda for the evening and add an item to it, please.
Okay.
The motion that I'd like to propose is I move that the Olathe Public Schools Board of Education return public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meetings as it has been prior to March 3rd, 2022, to include public comments livestreamed and part of the meeting.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
A second.
All right. And, Dr. Yeager, where would that be added? Well, I guess we'll vote on it first here.
Mr. Boyd?
We are going to add this to the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, 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 how about a discussion?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I just want to make sure. I like his yes.
Do you want to add it to the agenda or not?
Oh, oh, this is just adding it to the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Boyd.
Okay.
Sir, I was looking for where they were going to add it to the agenda. Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right, so I think we'll add that as 8.04, then, action other.
Is that prior to, I want to make sure that is prior to the adoption of a policy that was presented to the board via email earlier today. Is that correct? We received a notification that the board--
No, that's 6.12.
That what, what?
That's 6.12.
Then this would need to be prior to or at or about the same time because they're interrelated?
Well, if we adopt your motion, then it would supersede that, so I don't think that it matters.
You guys are smarter on that stuff than me. I just want to make sure I ask the question.
So I think we could add it as 6.13, but pull 6.12 until the conversation happens on 6.13. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
And that would be fine, too.
So we just pull the policy out so we can talk about the motion. And then go back to the policy.
And then go back to that after.
Correct.
Okay, so after, so 6.12 would happen after 8.--
So let, no, let's just, let's add it as like 6.1. Let's put it in the consent agenda, 6.13, but we'll pull 6.12 until we talk about 6.13. Mr. Attorney, does that seem okay? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's in six, action consent. All right?
Thank you. I'm good, too.
Okay. And now we are on to recognitions and awards. Ms. Felter, I think, is assisting?
So we adopted it with the added. We don't need to do anything else, right?
Not right now. No, we'll discuss it at that.
Okay.
6.--
Okay. Well, good evening. We have numerous recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We are going to begin our recognition with our state champion wrestlers. We have four students who have earned state championship titles for their respective weight classes. With the following, please come forward when I call your name, along with your coach and administrator. Olathe South sophomore Nicole Redman, come on up. This is Nicole's actual second state championship. She also won for her weight class in 2021. Congratulations, Nicole. Next, Olathe West Jr. Michaela Rivera. Michaela is also a back-to-back champion for her weight class. Congratulations to you. Olathe North Jr. Cale Alderman, who is a state champion in his weight class. And Olathe North Jr. Alex Samuelson, who won for his weight class. Congratulations to each of our state champion wrestlers. And parents, if you want to get a picture, come on up. Come on up, yep. Everybody got it? Right. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, next, we'd like to invite Dina Steen, third grade teacher at Ravenwood Elementary, along with her principal Jamie Veach and district science coordinator Julie Miller to come forward. Dina was named a State of Kansas finalist for the National Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching. This award is one of the highest recognitions that a K-12 science, technology, engineering, math, and/or computer science teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. This is incredible. Congratulations to you, Dina. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to welcome Santa Fe Trail Middle School counselor Emily Manker, along with her principal JJ Leibel. And before we talk about her recent award, we did want to congratulate Emily on her recent completion of her doctoral program. So congratulations, Dr. Manker. Dr. Manker was awarded the Kansas School Counselor Association's Promise Award. This award is presented annually to a school counselor who has been in the profession five years or less and has shown exemplary skill and contribution to their students, school, community, and profession. Congratulations. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to welcome Olathe North High School's science teacher and 21st Century Distinguished Scholars instructor Rhonda Reist, along with her principal Jason Herman and district science coordinator Julie Miller. Rhonda was awarded the Howard Gadberry Educator Award. She was nominated by a student to receive this annual award from the Greater Kansas City Science and Engineering Fair, and this honor recognizes a STEM teacher who shows outstanding effort in motivating students to explore science. Congratulations to you. Congratulations, Rhonda. Next, we'd like to invite Alicia Morris, Olathe West theater teacher, along with her principal Jane Obacheck, or Assistant Principal Pat Butler, who's great in here. Alicia has achieved the highest professional credential a teacher can earn, a certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. National Board certification takes from one to three years to complete and is recognized nationwide as a model for identifying accomplished teaching practice. Congratulations, Alicia. Congratulations. And last, but most certainly not least, we'd like to recognize Sunnyside Elementary principal Amy Hercules. Amy, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, Tim Reeves, and Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Jill Smith. Amy was selected as the Principal of the Year for Area One by the Kansas Principals' Association. The Kansas Principals' Association Principal of the Year recognizes outstanding principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students as well as demonstrating exemplary contributions to the profession. She was selected out of 51 outstanding nominees from across the state of Kansas and will now be submitted for consideration to be the Kansas Distinguished Principal of the Year. And if selected, which I'm sure she will be, she'll be in the running for the National Principal of the Year. Congratulations, Amy. Let's have one final round of applause for all of these.
Thank you, Maggie. And on to the information presentations. We have our school spotlight, Oregon Trail Middle School this month.
All right. Good evening. My name is Justin Howe. I am principal of Oregon Trail. And with me representing our great staff tonight is Mr. Nick Hoffmeyer over here, Special Education, and Ms. Nicole Chappell, our band director. I first want to say thank you to the board for inviting Oregon Trail to be the school spotlight this month and say thank you to those who came out and visited us Oregon Trail yesterday. I can tell you that having a board that's so involved with the schools, the students, the staff, it truly means the world to us. So thank you. I also want to say hi to everyone in the room. This is a middle school presentation. We're getting middle school up, okay? And everyone at home, we're going to break that fourth wall, so I want to say hi to my wife and kids who are watching at home, my students, my staff, my community.
You didn't win a Grammy, Mr. Howe.
This is my time, Dr. Yeager. And also to the people at home just watching, because I've been in that shoes, and we're going to rope you into tonight's presentation, too. So we're going to have some fun. But first, I want to tell you for the next few minutes, we're all going to be Tigers. So, and that'll make more sense at the end. I want to tell you a little bit about the background of Oregon Trail. OT opened its doors in 1976. The original colors back then were only blue and white, and over the years, we've adopted silver and gray. But when it's Royals, home opening day, blue, white, and gray, not a bad, not a bad color combo. Our current enrollment is 683 amazing students, and our mantra, our mission, if you will, is to be great, which we will touch on again shortly. When we were asked to present, the context was, just tell them what makes OT awesome. And I said, you won't have enough time. But they said, you get it down. So in the simplest answer, though, it's our students, staff, and community. We have 15 countries and seven languages represented in our community and our building every single day, which means we have students from every kind of background, learning from each other, not just the staff, every day. And we have a staff who, when they walk through our doors, they absolutely give everything they have to those kids. What makes OT awesome is also that our staff is about every student every day. See, we have this simple formula. Let me pull it up. Student ability plus student interest equals student engagement. We know our kids. We know their academic abilities. We know where they're good. We know where they struggle. We know their personal interests. And when you combine those two things, you get those aha magical moments, and they get better because they're learning. However, it would not be fair for me to stand here before the board and the community and just tell you, we engage, because this is not engaging. And we create learning. No, we're going to do that, because at Oregon Trail, it's not about what we say, it's about what we do. That is the Tiger way. So that's why it meant so much for the board to visit us yesterday as well, to be part of what we do, to feel the climate and the culture. So let's shift gears, and let me get out of the way here in just a minute. I'd like to invite everyone in the room to be part and a sample of what we do at Oregon Trail, how we can teach you no matter your background, no matter where you come from. So in the next few minutes, we're all going to learn. And I'm talking to you at home, too. We're going to go through the screen, and you're going to do it as well. So when prompted, all you need is your smartphone and a camera, and it'll act as a QR reader. In a few minutes, you'll see some QR codes on the screen, and we have some that we'll set up in the room as well. And over the next five minutes, we're going to learn. So to do that, I'm going to introduce one of our fabulous teachers, Ms. Nicole Chappell, our OT band director. Ms. Chappell, could you show them what we do at Oregon Trail?
All right, good evening. So we thought it would be fun tonight to get a little hands-on experience with how we approach instruction with this idea that we take individual student ability, peaking student interest, and combining those things to increase engagement. So, like Mr. Howe said, I am the band director, so we're talking music. So be ready, okay? Specifically, we're going, oh, I think I went too far. There we go. Specifically, we're going to talk about note names today. And like you see up here, and I'm going to ask you to wait to scan, if you would, but like you see up here, you're going to, you're going to have a choice to make, okay? You're going to get to choose a level that best represents your knowledge and your ability to name notes in treble and bass clef. Now, if you're like Mr. Howe, and you're going, uh-oh, I'm in trouble, please don't panic, okay? Because that's the great thing about this. There is literally something here for everyone, from very beginner, know nothing about note names, to the expert level. Okay? So Level One that you see up here, and again, I'm going to, I know it's tempting, you're excited, but I'm going to ask you to just hold off one second before you scan. Level One is going to be that foundational knowledge. It's the basic knowledge that you need to be able to name notes in treble and bass clef. So it's going to take you through some steps. It's going to give you some tricks and tips on how to remember those. Level Two is for those who maybe you have some musical knowledge, or you did once upon a time, and you need a little review, you need a reminder, before you get in there and start actually naming notes. Level Three is for those who are thinking, I got this. I know my note names. I am ready to take on this challenge. So no matter which QR code you pick, after you scan it, a document's going to come up, and it's going to have some information. It's also going to have some step-by-step instructions that's going to take you through the links that are on this document. It's going to take you to do some practice within that level. So at this time, I'm going to ask you to make that choice. Choose which level is right for you, Level One, Two, or Three. Go ahead and scan that QR code, and you might need to give it just a second for that document to populate. You might see it thinking and spinning a little bit, and that's okay. Just give it a second, because there's a lot of us doing it. So like I said, it might take just a minute to get that document pulled up, but then, what I'd love for you to do is just look through it. Look through the information that's there, read the step-by-step instructions, and then when you feel ready, please click the link and have some fun. And I also invite you to interact. This isn't a silent activity. We love our kids interacting. We want them talking about the information that they're seeing. So talk to neighbors. Talk about what you're seeing on that document. Talk about the links, you know, after you click on it and you're in there and practicing. Have some discussion. So I'm going to give you just a minute to kind of play around with this and have some fun, and hopefully we hear some discussion going on, and then I'll call us all back. Absolutely. Meant to be fun, so have fun with it. So what, what you're seeing, if you chose Level One, what you're seeing are some basics. You're seeing those lines and spaces. It also gives you, you know, some ways to remember the pattern and everything. Same thing with bass clef. And like I said, I invite you to click those links and just do some practice. I promise, this isn't sending any feedback to me. I promise. These, these exercises that you're seeing from these links are actually the exercises I use sometimes when we're doing note names. So what you are doing right now is what our students do. Green means good. Red means try again. Okay, so now if you get going, let's say you selected Level Two. You're thinking, I really, I think I got this. I think I remember. I just need a reminder. You get going on Level Two, and you get to the exercise, and you realize you're missing some. You see a little more red than green. What that means is you X out of that and go back to Level One. Get that foundational, basic knowledge. And that's the great thing about this setup is that you have options. And if you do start on a level and realize, ooh, that might be too much for me, you can always go back a level. And then when you're ready, you move forward a level. So when my students, you know, get through Levels One, Two, and Three, that means they're ready to go on to the enrichment level. And for this, since we're talking note names, it would probably be composition. So they would take this knowledge of these notes that they have been learning and building, and they would put it into creating their own music. So they're actually applying that knowledge. So with this kind of tiered differentiation that you're seeing and that you're participating in, we're not only giving students opportunities to make choices for their learning, but we're asking them to reflect. We're asking them to self-assess and figure out where they are in the process, and they can always go back. They move forward at their own pace, but we're ensuring that they're getting what they need as individuals. So the other thing that I love about this is this kind of structure gives them autonomy. It gives them choice, like we talked about, but it also gives them autonomy, and that's going to create investment. As soon as they make that choice based on their own ability level, they have investment in doing the best that they can, because they got to make that choice. So there's all kinds of great things about, you know, setting up a lesson this way. And honestly, this kind of instructional content is what you will see at Oregon Trail throughout the building every day. It really started as a once-a-week thing with our Win Fridays, What I Need Fridays, and it has blossomed since then, because so many of us realize, this is how we should be teaching. This is how we should approach the teaching and learning process. And we can know that we can reach students in classes from 10 all the way up to band classes of 60. And I know that in that class of 60, I am reaching every single learner, no matter where their ability is with naming notes or otherwise. I know that I'm given that, giving them that opportunity to start wherever they need to and then progress forward at their own pace. So thank you so much for indulging me. I hope this was a fun little experiment, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Howe.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you noticed, like me, if you got it wrong, it stayed red and it kind of eliminated it. Sometimes we learn more through failure. I'm not musically talented. I wish I was. So for those of you who are on challenge, accepted, bravo, well done. You know, you see, no matter the level of ability or the content, we just, we just did that together, and that's the power of the staff. But I'd like you here, for you to hear some other Tigers about their opinion about what makes OT special and great. And I want to give credit to this, to our communications multimedia class. They have done all of this video. So I want to play this real quick for everyone.
So at the beginning of this year, when we found out that the Auschwitz exhibit was going to extend its time at Union Station, I went to Mr. Howe and asked him if we could take the sixth grade. And I should have known that Mr. Howe was going to be bigger than me. And so he decided we were going to take the whole school. And so we spent three days taking each grade level one day at a time to the Auschwitz exhibit, which was heartbraining, but also the kind of learning that you can never get inside of a classroom. And it really helped our students who are reading novels and studying about the Holocaust to put pictures and actual, you know, imagery to the things that they were learning. It was powerful.
One of my favorite things probably, like, after school, things like basketball usually?
Um, typically, like, going to the games outside and the ones inside of basketball.
Um, people really include each other, and they just are super nice to each other. And you can have different friend groups, and you can click with other people that you might not usually click with.
Easily the people. The people are what makes this place amazing and special. Not only just the students and building those relationships with them, but the staff and how welcoming and amazing they are as well.
My parents?
Um, the people in it, they treat each other nicely most of the time. And then we are friendly towards other people.
I feel like the teachers and the students are very nice.
OT is super special because of the relationships that the kids have and the relationships that staff has with the kids.
I mean, everything in this school is great. I like the teachers. I like that my friends go here.
I think the thing that makes OT so special is that we really are family. I think all the students and staff are really supportive of one another, and we all just love each other. It is the best place to be, and I love being a Tiger.
Anytime I, anytime I need help on anything, everyone can, everyone helps, and I just never feel left out.
Um, maybe just like being able to say that I was in a school that's very supportive and very loving about everybody.
Yeah, studying at this school.
Just continued building strong relationships with everybody. I mean, that, that would make me proud, getting to know people who contribute to our community and seeing them as they get older and even become adults and start contributing to our community as well.
For that mission that I mentioned at the beginning, be great. You see, at OT, we tell every student, it doesn't really matter on a scale of one to 10, 10 being high, where you roll out of bed in the morning. If you're a three, then I expect you to be the best three knocking on four's door and be ready to go, because that's what we do. That exemplifies the Tiger way, and that exemplifies how Tigers are champions every day. And I brought a little something. That's what this big gold belt symbolizes, too. If you go on our Twitter at OTMS Tiger Pride, you will see every single day, students winning a Tiger title, and it's a representation. That means that they have exemplified tenacity, integrity, teamwork, leadership, and energy. And so there's a championship ring, a trophy, and of course, big gold. And we have had board members, superintendents, NFL players, but it's every single day we bring that. And it's just a very special thing for us. So at Oregon Trail, when we say be great, it's more than just that. But also at Oregon Trail, when I say be great, Tiger Nation responds with passion, with pride. Be a Tiger. So tonight, if only for a few minutes, we are all Tigers. Let's end this session the way we do at OT. I'll say be great. You say be a Tiger, even at home, and my kids better be doing this. So, Olathe, be loud, be proud. So, Olathe, be loud, be proud.
Uh, as you can see, our principal at Oregon Trail has no energy and enthusiasm at all. Um, but you know, it, it's such a pleasure to see Justin, uh, leading Oregon Trail and, and working with an amazing staff and, and an amazing community that are all really proud to be Tigers. It's very cool.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So Justin, I was so impressed. I got to visit you and I could have stayed all day because I was that kid that didn't fit in the box and you would have maybe caught it, you know, with the little QR codes. So thank you for that. It's really cool. It will keep kids engaged. Why do you need to be even more successful? What can we do as a board to help you?
You know, that, that's a great question. We talked about it a little bit yesterday and again, thank you so much. That was very powerful. Our kids and staff are very excited that you're in the building. Um, and, and really to acknowledge everything that this community, the board, senior leadership has already done for Oregon Trail. The last five years that I've been there, the support has been incredible. So continuing of course that, Mr. Hutchinson, Mr. Plangi, Dr. McMullin, Dr. Yeager, they've come out to the building individually and audited and walked and looked at our needs, similar to what you've done. And I also know that it's not just OT. All buildings have benefited from the support and to the community. Um, the last bond, those bonds are so crucial to us, especially in an aging facility. So I think to answer your question, there's probably two things. Um, the first one would be not just an OT thing, but for all older or aging facilities across the district, just continuing that investment and continuing that, look at that equity for each building and each community. Uh, as we know, 1976, almost 50 years ago, learning has obviously changed. And so, uh, so is the styles of teaching. And when we look at the portrait of a graduate and all those things. So looking at the equity of each community and each building and saying, how can we make this what we want for our future? You know, and, and that goes from everything from obviously brick and mortar to equipment like band equipment, um, maybe worn out over the decades or even a lunchroom. So I'm looking at Travis over here.
You can't even wink at him, did you?
Travis and I have a special relationship. The, the second though, and, and this, I was thinking about this all night, to be honest with you. And the second one, it really isn't a monetary thing and it's probably for the board and, and the whole community. Uh, it's not a secret. The last couple of years have been trying. They've been exhausting. Uh, I'm a parent of, of Olathe students and I'm a proud employee. Um, I left Iowa 15 years ago and I'll never go back permanently because this place is family. Olathe, when I got here day one, I sat right in this room and I was intimidated by the, the boardroom and all those things. Um, but it was family from day one and I love that. And so just to know that you have a legion of staff who when they walk through the doors every day cherish the honor because they know what's walking through our doors is the most important thing in everyone's world. You know, and we cherish that. So I think just reaching out to schools like you did and, and asking as a whole community too. Can I volunteer? Can I come read? Can I be a mentor? Um, or just send in a quick email to your teachers. Uh, we're here for you too as a school because we're the center of our communities and our neighborhoods. And so just continue that and, um, just like a family, sometimes we get along, sometimes we don't, but we're family and, and that's the most important thing.
Great, thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, on to 4.02, Olathe East update.
Well, good evening and appreciate the opportunity to update the board and the community on, uh, Olathe East. And, and frankly, tonight, we're just going to really focus on what has taken place since, uh, uh, the school shooting there on March 4th. For those of you that are, are in the room or watching online, you'll see a lot of the Olathe East spirit wear tonight. Our Board of Education and our superintendent's leadership team and other district staff are, uh, wearing these tonight to just show our, our ongoing support for East and that community and, and our appreciation for them. So, um, want to start tonight with just a sincere thank you to our law enforcement partners. Uh, what, what they did that day was, was beyond heroic, um, beyond impressive and, uh, just can't thank, um, the Olathe Police Department, all the other agencies, our own fire department, Med Act. Um, we've got two of those folks in here right now. Um, Officer Falcon, who's an SRO and Sergeant Lyric, one of our SRO supervisors. And I'd like to give them and all of their colleagues a round of applause. You know, they say sometimes the worst brings out the best and, and we certainly saw that, uh, that day as we were working through that and, and reuniting our families. And it was amazing the number of community members and, uh, community businesses that stepped up that day and were just delivering food to parents while they were waiting to reunify with their children. We didn't ask, we didn't reach out, they just did it. Um, and so can't thank all of them enough and, and to the parents in the East community. Uh, their support, um, and, uh, response was just tremendous and, uh, it, it was very beneficial, um, for the students and staff involved. You know, obviously, uh, that event took place on a Friday, so, um, we quickly had to put in, you know, our, in to, uh, plan our, our action steps to support East, uh, properly. Obviously, it's the first time we've dealt with something, uh, of that magnitude in this district. Um, and, uh, I think we did it right. Uh, that first week back, we had a tremendous amount of additional district support personnel um, onsite at East, um, doing anything and everything from, uh, we had assistant principals from all of our high schools there to help just cover lunch duty and passing periods and drop off and pick up and take care of some of those daily tasks. Um, while the East admin and, and staff could, could tend to their own. Um, our community su- uh, support was, uh, just off the charts that week. Angie Salva, um, and her department, um, the mental health resources were just second to none. On that first day back, we had 50 counselors embedded in classrooms throughout that. They're just in rooms to support kids, support teachers, uh, that needed that. Um, that certainly tapered off throughout the week. Um, and that was something they gauged and adjusted as needed. The therapy dogs, um, frankly, were the, the one thing that, and I see it right here, it just made everybody smile, um, having, uh, I mean, and honestly, it looked like, uh, it looked like the dog shelter for a while. There were so many dogs there. Um, and, uh, everything was great except for the sheriff's department who was wonderful. I didn't even know they had a therapy dog and they brought theirs in and everybody thought it was a drug dog, so we had to kind of adjust to that. But, uh, but seeing the kids working with the therapy dogs and the, the smiles on their faces and the return to a little normalcy was just, uh, awesome. And then the last piece of that first week was just what we call some modified academic expectations. The staff did such a good job of really just focusing on kids and themselves and, and healing as, as a staff and as a community. Um, you know, whether, you know, that math quiz didn't have to happen on Tuesday or a late assignment didn't have to be a big deal. It was really about, um, you know, rebuilding, um, healing and, and moving forward. And so was, uh, beyond impressed with the East staff and, and the students, um, that week. I'm gonna let, uh, Brent Keiger, uh, take you through the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin. Absolutely. Just again, want to just mention the, the thanks we have for, for board, the community, law enforcement, fire, Med Act is unbelievable. Um, wanted to talk a little bit about some of the, the continual supports and some of the next steps that we have. Obviously, we understand that, that the situation that day is over. It's not really over for, for a lot of folks. Um, that we, we've partnered with John Scunney Mental Health. Uh, they've, they've done, they've, they've been a great partner with us from doing what we call peer support or peer debriefs, uh, from, from our folks in that building. They, um, a lot of people don't realize it necessarily, but, but they work with our, our staff and our students on a routine basis. Um, but especially in this case, uh, they're, they're taking a hu- a huge role in, in these debriefs to, to let our folks emotionally process, uh, process some of that. Uh, some of what we call the tactical debriefs are, are something that, that Dr. McMullin and myself are, are helping lead. And, and what we, what we mean by a tactical debrief is that, that is more of what was our response that day? How did we respond? Who did what? What roles were managed and, and who managed them? Um, and also what, what lessons, lessons can we learn? So obviously we spoke with our law enforcement, uh, law enforcement partners. We've got a meeting scheduled with our fire department, our transportation folks, uh, that brought in an amazing amount of buses and an amazing amount of time, just, just the way it all flowed. But, but we also understand that, that there might've been a few things we could do different and that's what we're doing now is, is sitting down with these groups of folks to figure out what can we learn in the unfortunate event of something happening similar? How can we do it better? So those are the things that, that we're currently doing. Uh, and additionally, we, we've sent out a, a, a internal survey to, to our Olathe East staff to have the ability, ability to either provide their own feedback, whether it's anonymous or not, but just to give us their perspective. Um, whether they were in a classroom, whether they were in the office, wherever their role, if they're an Olathe East staff member, uh, they received that survey and we'll be going through that feedback, which we think is a critical part to, to hear from their perspective. While we know what we all did that day, we want to hear what they, uh, what they perceived that day and, and how it went from, from their perspective. Uh, and additionally, myself and my team, we're, we're doing an ongoing internal review of that day. So we'll be interviewing all of our, uh, personnel that had any role in that to figure out what led up to that event and then what did we do directly after? So that, that's going to be an ongoing process. Certainly the mental health needs are, are there and we're going to continue to support that. Uh, we, we have what we call the help clinic. That's again, uh, shout out to Angie Sullivan, her team, uh, helping with our summer mental health or, or help clinic. So that's, that's open, uh, to, to anyone affiliated with the district and, and there'll be more information that gets sent out by the schools regarding that uh, in around May, first, uh, first or second week of May. Um, additionally, and any sort of support that Olathe East may need, whether we realize it now or whether it comes up at the first part of next year, the district of course stands ready to provide any sort of additional, uh, help and support in any way that we can.
To kind of wrap us up, um, as the board knows, we, we are hosting a safety town hall meeting uh, on April 19th at 6:30 at Olathe East. And similar to tonight, you know, one thing we've, we've tried to be as, as transparent as possible with, with our community is, uh, there are multiple ongoing investigations from that day from, from multiple agencies right now. And so speaking about the specifics of that day or, or something that can't be done tonight and, and won't be able to be shared on the 19th. But on the 19th, um, along with, uh, our partners from the police department and fire department, we're going to really share the comprehensive safety plan, uh, with our community. Cause I think there are so many things that we do on a daily basis, pre-K through 12 in this district, um, that most people don't even know are, are in place. And so we thought it was a, a really good time to, uh, inform the community all the best practices and systems and procedures and programs that we do have in place. And so we look forward to sharing those with the community. And then finally, I'd be remiss to not just recognize Brett Keiger, our Director of Safety Services and Brett Caldwell, our Manager of Safety and Ser- Services. They have, uh, not only their work on that day was, was unparalleled, but since then, they've had to do their current day job while also trying to continue to work on, on that situation as well. And they've, they've just been tremendous, um, for us. So thank you, uh, to them. And with that, we'll stand for any questions.
Questions from the board?
I don't know that I have a question, but it was our very last meeting. We sat here and listened to the East principals present on a program that they have going on at East. And so it, it's very, um, kind of cathartic, emotional, sitting here tonight and listening to the update. After the fact, tuning into a lot of the news interviews and, and they were talking to, you know, anybody that would talk to them on the streets and the parents and grandparents. And it, the feedback was just phenomenal from the community and that's top-down leadership. So I think Dr. Yeager and you, Dr. McMullin, and heard tremendously from our senior leadership staff, they just kind of flew into motion. Um, Dr. G is not here, but one of the news, um, clips that I saw was her in the background, like physically moving the news crew out of the way so she could usher in buses. And it just, everybody was just really, um, playing a part that day that, that, you know, they never knew they would. So, and again, to echo your comments on, um, Brett Keiger, that thank you for, for all you did that day and, and for our law enforcement that are here tonight. So no questions, just thank you to everybody for what you did then and what you're continuing to do.
One thing I wanted to add. For all the external things that took place to take care of everybody, I have heard a lot from teachers and from the students who took care of each other in the building. There were kids traumatized themselves who went and made signs. That wasn't the rest of us adults. They were 16, 17-year-old seniors saying, does it matter? They were putting them out in the sleet. If you remember, sleet of that Sunday night, right? Those were kids taking care of each other and for my daughter. Nor, you know, these kids are all holiday, the 21st century. They're all their friends. They're all their neighbors. What the community of high school kids did for each other, I want to make sure that I call that out. Cause we are developing these children, but when they take action and they step into that role of caring for each other and for the staff, the teachers, they're taking care of kids at the same time they're taking care of each other. So I just want to make sure we call out and recognize the internal, port of two, the internal network, what carried on in that staff and those teachers have developed inside that school that acted, reacted, and continued to take care of each other. Because yes, we all on the outside were there. At the end of the day, Monday and Tuesday, it was themselves, you know, in those rooms. So I just want to make sure I call that out so they heard that. Cause I've had a lot of reach outs and I just want to make sure they know I heard it and I saw it. Congratulations on that.
If, if it's okay, I was going to talk just briefly in my comments, but I think I'll do it now if it's all right. You know, that was one of the most challenging days in our history as a school district. And, um, you know, I, I would be remiss if, um, I didn't say how proud I was of the Olathe East staff and student population. Um, I had the opportunity to be there for a few hours that day and interact with a lot of people. Um, it was incredible, um, to see our young people who sometimes we question, well, they make good choices. Um, you know, they were amazing that day as, as they were taking care of each other, as they were saying thank you to law enforcement officers who were helping them out of the building, um, who were, they were saying back to adults, are you okay? Um, it was incredible. Um, you know, it was a, a really hard, hard thing, but our students and staff at Olathe East were amazing. Um, with that, I'd also say I've never been more proud of our senior leadership team. Um, we were all in various meetings, some of us in the same meeting. We got the call and it took about a minute and a half for the whole group to assemble in our crisis center. And it really was, uh, uh, a motion of what do we need to do and how do we jump in? You know, it's one of those things where you kind of have to catch your breath just briefly and say, okay, we know what to do in this situation and navigate. But I've never been more proud of our senior team and the way that they jumped in to do everything to support, um, what was happening in our district that day. Along with that, I would say every administrator in the district, you know, phone calls, text messages, where do you need me? Where can I go? How can I support it? Um, counselors, nurses, all the same thing. Um, it was amazing to watch that happen. And then the other piece that was really fantastic was that you all showed up as a board of education. Um, nobody asked you to do that. Um, you, you showed up with bottles of water and love and care and all you could do to help our, our staff and our students and, and parents who were nervously waiting for information about their kids. So, um, gosh, we've been through a lot this year. Um, but that day, you know, as, 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 um, we talked as a senior team, as I talked to our board of education, um, you know, that, that's the power of the community that we're all part of here in Olathe. Um, it's sad that sometimes it takes something so tragic to remind us of that. Um, but boy, it was an unthinkable event. Um, but I know myself, along with many others, cannot be more proud of, of how the community pitched in to support our school on that hard day. So, but I wanted to thank the board as well because you all were, were there both that day, but also in the days after and doing various things to support the school and the community. So thank you as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along to executive session. Could I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? Oh, how much time?
20 minutes, please.
So it would be 7:10. Move that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel for non-elected personnel exception under coma and the board returned to the regular meeting at 7:10 in this room.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliffe, second by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I think we have everyone here. We are on to six point or six action consent. Does anyone have anything, any questions or anything? Six point zero one through six point one one.
Can you give me just a minute?
And as you're looking, if nobody does, let's take those together. And then I've been told we can do six, well, table six twelve, do six thirteen first.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered six dot zero one through six dot one one as presented.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wickliffe. Thank you by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Felter.
Motion by Mr. Boyd. Thank you by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
All right, and so we will table six point one two and move on to six point one three. So, Mr. Connell, do you have a motion ready?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's the one I read earlier.
So, does, does.
Barb, do you feel, do you have it?
Go ahead. Can you say it again, please?
Super slow.
Try, move that the Alatha Public Schools Board of Education return public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meetings as it was prior to March third, two thousand twenty-two, and to ensure live streaming.
Do you want me to read it one more time?
Let's try. Are you ready?
I move that Alatha Public Schools Board of Education return public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meetings as it was prior to March third, two thousand twenty-two, and to ensure live streaming.
Got it.
All right, so we have a motion. Then we need a second.
A second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Connell, thank you by Mr. Kuhn, and then we have some discussion, I assume. Mr. Connell.
Sure.
Since it's your motion, you can start.
Thanks. So, my commentary from last month still stands as I was very vehemently against moving it. There was a comment at the end that this could always be returned back to the board meetings and could be addressed at each particular meeting, and so I promised that I would bring it up, and I am. We heard very, very clearly from a multitude of folks, teachers, parents, students, that they felt very strongly that it is considered an essential and valuable part of these board meetings that they be included. And my personal need is, if you all saw, I did put my video recording here because I do write notes to those who spoke. Kamal be an example, really awesome student in our community. I reached out to her, didn't have another way, so I reached out to her via Twitter and just said, "Thank you for coming and speaking a couple of months ago." Those, those recordings, those videos, YouTube's allowed me to find the names for mine. This is the first month I've been given a full name of list of emails and how to reach these people, so I appreciate that. But those allowed me to get that opportunity to say, "Thank you for stepping up and saying things." I think it's important for us as a board to look at this as part of the whole. I understand there's some value in it, but five o'clock was also awful hard for me today. There was a professional council meeting scheduled today that was not going to be rescheduled, even though we had moved comments to it.
All right, I think we have everyone here. We are on to six point or six action consent. Does anyone have anything, any questions or anything? Six point zero one through six point one one. And as you're looking, if nobody does, let's take those together. And then I've been told we can do six, well, table six twelve, do six thirteen first.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
I move to approve consent agenda items numbered six dot zero one through six dot one one as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Felter.
Sorry.
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, thank you by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
All right, and so we will table six point one two and move on to six point one three. So, Mr. Connell, do you have a motion ready?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's the one I read earlier.
So just, just.
Barb, do you feel, do you have it?
Are you ready?
Go ahead, can you say it again, please?
Super slow.
Try, move that the Alatha Public Schools Board of Education return public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meetings as it was prior to March third, two thousand twenty-two, and to ensure live streaming.
Do you want to read it back, or would that be the best way to do it? Just to make sure we have it right?
Do you want me to read it one more time?
Let's try, are you ready?
I move that Alatha Public Schools Board of Education return public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meetings as it was prior to March third, two thousand twenty-two, and to ensure live streaming.
Got it.
All right, so we have a motion. Then we need a second.
A second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Connell, thank you by Mr. Kuhn, and then we have some discussion, I assume. Mr. Connell.
Sure.
Since it's your motion, you can start.
Thanks. So my commentary from last month still stands as I was very vehemently against moving it. There was a comment at the end that this could always be returned back to the board meetings and could be addressed at each particular meeting, and so I promised that I would bring it up, and I am. We heard very, very clearly from a multitude of folks, teachers, parents, students, that they felt very strongly that it is considered an essential and valuable part of these board meetings, that they be included. And my personal need is, if you all saw, I did put my video recording here because I do write notes to those who spoke. Kamal be an example, really awesome student in our community. I reached out to, didn't have another way, so I reached out to her via Twitter and just said, "Thank you for coming and speaking a couple of months ago." Those, those recordings, those videos, YouTube's allowed me to find the names for mine. This is the first month I've been given a full name of list of emails and how to reach these people. So I appreciate that. But those allowed me to get that opportunity to say, "Thank you for stepping up and saying things." I think it's important for us as a board to look at this as part of the whole. I understand there's some value in it, but five o'clock was also awful hard for me today. There was a professional council meeting scheduled today that was not going to be rescheduled, even though we had moved comments to it. That meant the teachers and our own staff were there instead of here during public comments. And the teachers' union, the O N E A, those teachers, they were there, being present to participate and or just to watch, were subject to miss, possibly missing our meeting. Their meeting didn't, was four to five thirty. If we started at five o'clock, their ability to hear and be present was jeopardized alongside everybody else's. So I think the truly honest and fair thing to do is to move it back into our six o'clock meeting. Now, if we want to move to our change, the motion, we move our meetings to start at five thirty, that's different. But I think the conflict to the families, to our constituents within the district pulls on my heart and our mind that we really do need to return it back where it belongs. That's my, my case for it.
Any other comments or?
Brian, thank you, I appreciate your comments. From my perspective, you know, I view public comments as a time for the public to come and interact with the board. And, you know, we are here, we are present, they're here, interacting with us, we're receiving their public comments. The, there's, there's open seating here in our boardroom. And for that reason, you know, I don't see the, the reason to change it from how it is now.
I, I would love to add that I loved having the twenty minutes extra to hear from more people. And, I mean, it was, it's, if, at two minutes each, it's ten additional people that we get to hear from. And there's value to that. I mean, we had, it's funny, Shannon and I were talking earlier, we're like, we're almost back to somewhat normal because we're hearing about cheerleading issues when it's not pandemic, it's not masking. None of them are desirable that we heard. Most of them were not desirable tonight, but we need to hear them. And it's nice to deal with something somewhat normal to education during this time, so it feels still a little extra, I would call it, but getting to hear twenty-two people over that period of time was valuable to me. And then, Brian, you're given the list, you know, which is great. Barb, I know that takes a lot of work, thank you, but it has the email and contact info, so I see value in that. I mean, thirty minutes is quick in a Board of Ed meeting, so.
May I respond to that?
Oh, please, yeah.
So the policy of only thirty minutes is controlled one hundred percent by our board president. Under our own policy rules, he has control and choice to expand or engage thirty minutes or make it forty-five minutes. That is all on Joe Beveridge. So when you're saying that only thirty minutes, that plea goes that direction to say, "Hey, Joe, you're the board president, the policy allows you to expand that up to forty-five minutes if the number of signees allow, and then all twenty-two of those people would be included within our livestreamed, public-access board meeting at a time that the entire community could be here involved." So I hear your call for thirty minutes is not enough. That is one hundred percent, it's written in the policy, that the president of the board controls that one hundred percent. So I would encourage that that would be on Joe, that we ask Joe, would he be willing to expand that to forty-five minutes as the board president? If that many people signed up.
Yeah, under normal circumstances, we'd go months without anybody signing up. So this is anything far from normal, having this many, for sure.
I agree.
Any other comments? All right.
Read it back?
Yep, well, yeah, yeah, read it back and then take the.
The motion is, for the Alatha Public School Board of Education to return to public comments back into the full, normal Board of Education meeting as it was prior to March third, two thousand twenty-two, and to ensure live streaming. Mrs. Felter.
Um, no.
Mrs. Steele.
No.
Mr. Wickliffe.
No.
Mr. Boyd.
No.
Mr. Beveridge.
No.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Moving on to, we'll go back to six point one two. Does anyone have any questions about that board policy revision? If not.
I do have a question.
Okay.
So the board revision policy now requires several new sentiments that include the statement. When beginning to comment, speakers will state their name, the city where they live, and if applicable, the schools or children attend, have attended, or the connections to the district. Is that going to be taken from their two minutes? Or is that their two minutes start after they articulate that information? Or three minutes, or whatever time you allocate? My questions are, is that excluded from their time to actually speak their piece?
I would be a hundred percent comfortable with starting their time after they say those things.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with that too as board president, so.
And if they've registered, do we need them to state all of those things?
I mean, we haven't been doing that since then, so.
I think the intent is to make sure we have that info, not necessarily that it's broadcast, you know, to the whole room and.
Yeah, excuse me, however you'd like us to do that, we'll accommodate that. So whether it be to share at the podium or just to make sure that we have that before someone speaks, we're happy to do whatever the preference of the board is with that.
I don't think the intention is to cut into the time at all.
Then you're saying we should stricken that from the board policy because it's already covered in the first paragraph that says, "Rules for public comment are found on Alatha Public Schools website, and we provide upon written requests sent to the board. And if it already requires that information, we do not need to stipulate that they say this a second time." Is that correct? It says, "When beginning their comments." So I would move that we stricken that entire sentence from the board policy and not approve the board policy with that in it.
Do we have the, the other policy? It was here earlier, I thought, that had the form that they fill out or the.
The, the policy is congruent with the form that we have. That's one of the things that as Mr. Pittman worked through it, we felt like was important for us to have the policy and the form line up closely. So that's like, why this language is in both places. But again, based on the board's decision, if, if there's something that you would like us to take out of the policy, certainly we'll do that.
I think us capturing that information is important. Because as, I would like to know someone's connection to the district as they're addressing us in public comments. But I can understand how, you know, we heard tonight a, a speaker not being comfortable sharing information for whatever reason. But I think if the board has access to their information, whether it's for follow-up purposes or whatever, I think it's important to have it. Whether or not they have to say it, or whether or not, you know, we count their two minutes or three minutes, you know, after they've given that, you know, it's a matter of, I guess, you know, Chris updating the policy real time, I don't know.
And if the board should decide that, you know, that, the card is the most important thing to gather that information, so you all have access to that, we would probably be able to remove almost all of that paragraph as long as your direction to our staff would be that we're going to collect that information on that registration card prior to someone speaking.
I guess historically, has that information been captured on that card?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
In, in various ways, I will tell you that we probably have been lenient over, about that over the last couple of years, as we've had far more public participants than we've ever had in our past. And sometimes from an administration standpoint, that can even be a little challenging because there are times when we have public speakers that come and express things to the board, and we see someone and we say, "Okay, we, we'd like to have a conversation, you know, from an administrative level to try to figure out what's going on and how we can help the situation that way." So it's very helpful for us as well.
So I'd like to still leave something in there so we can capture that information, so it's in our policy. I'm trying to write that real quick, can you give me one second so that I can?
Sure, it's not the only part of this I want to contest, so I'll wait for you. But I, my full belief, my full belief is since we already gather that information, it's a redundant element that just takes time. That means.
It just needs to be in policy.
I would like it to be in policy, so they have to do it before they speak. So it would say something like, I'm looking at Chris, "Prior to their public comments, speakers will provide their name and then go on from there." And I don't think we'd have to change anything else. So, I mean, we can move on to what else you'd like to talk about, but if we make a motion that has, I'd like to amend that paragraph to say that, that would be my preference.
And I think that would be acceptable language, "Prior to speaking."
Yeah, yeah, so that would be, you know, to Barb via email or on a, on a form, however.
So Joe, would it be better to just make a motion to remove six dots, one, two from the agenda in table to next month and have Chris work on, no?
That would not be my preference, but if that's what the board decides.
Work through, what's your other comment?
Good for, so let's go to the next sentence. Except to ask clarifying questions, board members shall not interact with the speakers during the limited public forum. So is there any particular reason why you would exclude when you, all of us, when the current policy has the president is the, unless, right now, the policy says the president would be the one that would interact with those persons, unless recognized by the president to have interactions? Let's come to the policy today, says, right now, no one would interact with them except for the president. Now you're excluding the president from that, or, and you're excluding the president's right to identify somebody else to have an interchange or exchange with that person. Any particular reason why you want this to be stone walls and non-responsive in any way, shape, or form?
I don't, I don't think that's the intention, intention of it, but Chris, can you clarify?
Words are words, that's why I'm asking.
Good evening, sir, I'm trying to. Well, I'm sorry, and, and Mr. Connell, that gets to the clarifying questions to the.
And what makes a clarifying question? Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, well, yeah. Well, I think the, the purpose of that, I mean, there's probably some, some, some purposes is for the, the community to, to address all of you. I think one, I can think of one, one drawback of having a back and forth is that sometimes that, that they could draw, drown out the time that other folks be able to speak. I suppose that's one reason. You know, I, that, that's one, that's one example I, I, I could think of. Again, the public comment, because it's a public forum, is geared more towards the folks that want to speak rather than the board addressing them. You know, in terms of clarifying questions, I think that's up to Mr. Beveridge to decide, whoever is the presiding officer, you know, to try to, you know, hash that out, so to speak, so.
Also, it's not truly, I mean, the language clearly says limited public forums, it's not full public forum. It is a limited public forum, and it's limited because we're not streaming and there's no public outside the physical.
Well, that's, that's not true, that's.
It's limited due to time.
Do you want to explain what the difference between limited public forum?
Sure, because there is no public outside the room, so that's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, no, 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 I appreciate that. It's a, it, it, it's, it's a creation of the, of the First Amendment. There, you think a public forum, that's, say, like a, I'm just giving example of Park, where we can go out and, you know, protest, speak, whatever you want to do, some type of expression. Because public, because we are not required to have a public comment period here, but we create the opportunity for folks to be able to come in and address all, you know, the board. The, the United States Supreme Court over the years has said that this is what's known as, is what's known as a limited public forum. And that means that as a, and this goes with city councils and, you know, anyone else, not just school boards, that we have the ability to kind of regulate, make sure that the, the proceedings go, you know, appropriately as to time, place, and manner. So no worse the time that we're all here, the, the manner that, you know, perhaps we're going to go to the podium and, and those types of things. So that's just it, so answer, admit to, to Mr. Beveridge, it's just, it, it's from case law, it's from, it's from lawsuits. They, they call this a limited public forum, which means as a school district, as, as the Board of Education has some power to make sure, and some, you know, to make sure that the, that the public comment kind of goes smoothly, that we're able to, you know, to move through and, and folks are, are talking about topics that are relevant to the board and germane to, to the board's business, those types.
It is my concern and opinion that we were provided access to this late this afternoon, not given proper time to agree, to understand it, dissect it, and the fact that it does say in the very first sentence, "Tonight's speakers should have complete, fully completed a form provided to the board clerk to speak," and we have redundant language. I would very much encourage the board to say, "Let's clean this up, let's postpone this for another month." Because there are redundant pieces in this, Chris, that we're in a, we shouldn't be in a gobbledygook policy model. We got enough policies that we probably ought to be reviewing. This one needs to be better and tightened up, and I would encourage that we all kind of say, "No, until it's better fixed."
So I'll just throw out there, I've watched a lot of board meetings over the last two years, more than I care to admit.
I agree.
I've never, I've never seen a public comment and board interaction that was positive or good for the school district. So my personal opinion is, this, this language is fine. And I don't want our public comments to turn into, "Let's have a debate between person A and board member B." I don't see anything, I, I don't see anything to gain from that. And there's plenty of other opportunities. We can have coffee with community members, we can email exchange with community members. We're talking about setting up something for board members and admin to invite community. And so we're not preventing that, but I don't, I don't, I would prefer that it's not in our board meeting, that, that back and forth, so.
And I guess I would. I did ask what a clarifying question was, and I didn't get a definition, because I wrote down, looked with a question mark, so I asked. It says, "Except to ask clarifying questions." Do we need a definition of what that, what that means?
I don't think so.
I don't.
It's self-evident.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I think at this point, you're.
But you just said, "Asking any clarifying questions or any interactions has never been positive." So why even have that?
No, interaction between board members, typically a clarifying question would be with staff is what are my experience on the board has been, is somebody has a question about something and we clear it up.
I, I think that a clarifying question is pretty standard. I think we could all pretty much understand what that is. And I don't know that if, if you, if we want to nitpick that there are some redundancies in a policy that's less than one page, that doesn't materially affect the policy.
But Shannon, does this not reflect on all the policies that we are held accountable for owning and being responsible for? We received communication this week about asking for clarifications on other policies. We, we are responsible for owing the community that we are tightening, careful, and clarifying our, clarifying our policies, to be very careful in the language that we use. And I'm saying that this is one, and I have been reading the board policies for the last year and a half, slowly, because there's a million of them, and I find inconsistencies. And if I find inconsistencies in this one, and I'm responsible for voting for it, I will vote no for this.
That's fair.
That's fair.
And you all make a choice in front of the community that this mushy-mushy, gobbledygooky is acceptable.
Well, staff prepared this, right? Staff prepared this.
And I'm asking them, you, to say, go back to the staff to say, "Let's tighten that up better, let's tighten it up."
And so there's difference between redundancy and inconsistency, I just want that out there.
Does anyone have any other comments on the, this, this second sentence on the fourth paragraph? If not, would you like to move on to your third concern?
No, I'm, I'm, I said my piece. I don't think, I don't think I'm going to change anybody's minds up here, and so it's just better for me to just let you all do what you do.
I do want to point out that the first one, we did, you did change your mind. And if there is a motion, I would prefer that it has the language you recommend, recommended.
Yeah, I think.
Because it says in the first sentence of the first paragraph, you're, you're, again, it says.
So you, you're welcome to continue with your other two, because you made a change on the first one, if you'd like, or not.
Nothing.
Okay. So I'm just gonna, I'm not going to make the motion. I don't know why, can a board president make a motion, or, I've never done it. But I would, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that. But I would, um, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept six point.
One, two?
One, two, uh, with the amendments that the, oh, sorry.
No, it's fine, go ahead, accept with the amendment.
The first sentence in the fourth paragraph will start prior to their public comments, comma, speakers will provide their. And then continue with the.
What's her name?
Language as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beveridge? Maybe that's why. Uh, second by Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Would you like for me to read it again, or?
Um, would anyone like us, like me to read it again?
Oh, I just have one question. So this would be whether the meeting's at five o'clock, or if ever it's moved to regular meeting?
Okay.
Ready?
All right, any other, would do, does anyone want to, Barb, read it again? Okay, so, yeah, just take the vote.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
No.
All right.
Okay.
And moving on to seven, actions, bids, contracts, agreements. Um, does anyone have anything that they'd like to ask staff about? Okay, well, we've got a couple, and I have one.
Go ahead, Leanna.
I was just gonna ask about seven point oh three and seven point oh five, um, our replacement cycle. On those, there's Matt, I was looking for you. So Matt, um, seven point oh three is our laptop devices, and seven point oh five are Apple devices. Do we have a defined, uh, replacement cycle?
Yes.
Okay.
So we ti, the Apple is typically three to five years, and we're actually in year five, so that we're right on pace there. And then, the fresh, this will be our first freshman one-to-one replacement cycle, um, and we're actually in year four, going into year five.
Okay, okay, and then the laptops, are they?
That's, that's, that's what I was referring to, laptops.
Okay, and, and, okay, I got you. Laptops, eh, they're both three to five years, right, and?
The, the, the student high school laptops, the one-to-one laptops, they're, they're usually four years.
Okay.
We're actually in year five, we ex, we got an extra year out of them. Um, so that, this will be our first replacement cycle, and we're only doing it at the freshman level.
Okay, very good, thank you.
We'd have a quick question, we're away there.
Yeah.
The public information refers to this as budget source bond. The way this reads is this saying, this board is authorizing the sale of our bonds from the two hundred ninety-eight point three million dollars. To sell those bonds, we have not authorized that yet, but to sell those bonds in order to pay for these i, these multiple items here that list bond as its source.
So this, this actually gives us the flexibility to use previous bond and new, because we actually don't pay until we receive. We won't receive these items until after July one.
So we're not authorizing the bond sale to pay for these, these are coming from money that already exists in the district somewhere.
Gives us the ability to do twenty sixteen bond, is that correct?
I'll be real careful on that, because we have budget issues, and I want to make sure we're using the right budget.
If later in the agenda, you do not authorize the bond sale, he cannot, he cannot proceed with the purchase of these. These are coming out of the new bond sale, uh, so it, it's contingent on that. I would not have the funding to complete the entire replacement. Uh, while we do have some residual from previous bond issues, not enough for the full replacement.
And the bond vote is listed as item which?
Eight dot zero three.
Eight dot, dot zero three.
Should we not table these elements until after the bond? Should we not put money out on the table that we haven't authorized?
If, if you don't authorize the bond sales, the, it wouldn't go forward.
Okay.
So it would nullify what's there.
I can't do the purchase order if I don't have the funding.
I'm telling you, but I'm just making sure I'm asking the questions.
Matt, I had a question about, uh, seven oh, hmm, uh, seven oh two, which is the backup, the VIM. Um, so is that, um, what devices does that protect? Internal district devices?
It's all of our internal server and software systems that we use to back up all that data, so our student information system is hosted here internally, and this allows us to back those things up, so if we ever did, knock on wood, have a ransomware attack, these backups allow us to restore like that.
Yeah, runs a duplicate, wait, and so that's the, basically, server backups, more than device. This isn't really about the devices, yeah.
Everything is, comes back to central, either hosted in the cloud or here internally.
Okay, okay.
But this, this particular set of software is for internal.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Before you sit down.
Yeah.
Uh, I just, I just wanted to, um.
I always feel like I'm in trouble.
And I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure if this is, if this is gonna be you, Matt, um, seven dot zero six, just maybe refreshing our memory on the Raptor system?
That is not.
Okay, I don't know if that's Mr. Keiger, or Jim, I don't know.
Matt, you're no longer in trouble.
Thank you.
Questions about Raptors specifically?
Yeah, just, just kind of a quick refresher on what that system is and what that does for us.
Absolutely, so, so Raptors are visitor, visitor management system that we rolled out, uh, third quarter of twenty twenty. Basically, what it does is it goes from where we used to have folks that would come visit our schools, whether that be to read to a class, or come for lunch, or, or, or whatever reason, uh, they basically just wrote their name down and got a, a district visitor sticker, and one on their shirt. What Raptor does now is, is it scans a government-issued ID and prints a, a, um, a sticker, a badge sticker that goes on their shirt that contains their, their photograph on it, where they're going, and the reason for their business. So not only is that nice, but it's, it's a tool that allows our buildings and our, and our administrators to know who's in our buildings, and when, when did they come, when did they leave, that, that sort of deal. Um, for, for example, you know, seeing this on, on the agenda, I looked up kind of some numbers, and, and this year, our Raptor visitor management has scanned over twenty-eight thousand visitors district-wide, um, over forty-one hundred just last month, and we had spring break before. So it goes to show how often that is utilized, uh, throughout our district, and it's, it's just a great tool, uh, for, for at least for my field as well, and the safety to know who's in our buildings, when, and why.
For sure, thank you, appreciate it.
You bet.
How many of our buildings currently have the Raptor system in it? I know we do every time we come in, come through the front, right, or someone comes through this building. How many buildings currently use the Raptor system?
They all have, they all have it.
So at the schools, they do it as well?
Schools have it.
Even the elementary schools?
Yes.
Yes, every school.
Cause I was at an elementary school the other day where everybody just kind of signed in on a piece of paper and got a visitor tag.
So it depends, if, if there's a, if there's a bulk event, then, then Raptor's not necessarily designed to, again, I don't know which, which event or school you're referring to, but if there's a lot of.
I happened to be at a school, and they were having a first grade, and they, and they invite, and they, you know, two hundred people were in there, and I just happened to be at the same time, they're like, you wanna watch first graders sing? I was like, oh.
That's exactly why, just because it's not geared to scan.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. You ready for a motion?
Um, I have one question for Mr. Hutchinson, would you mind just talking real quick about seven point oh eight? The Santa Fe Trail Middle School Architectural Engineering Proposal?
Certainly, um, architectural services are one of the types of services that the board does not have to competitively bid. And with escalation costs, um, in construction running about, uh, three percent a quarter, or twelve percent annually, uh, we were interested in trying to, uh, get the construction going as quickly as possible. As you know, we do prototype designs, which means we, uh, design a, uh, elementary or a middle school, and try to just tweak that internally uh, uh, based on our experiences, and we do that as long till there's a ver, uh, uh, kind of a large revelation in, in design. Uh, we did that with Mission Trail, became Summit Trail with some adjustment, now we're taking that, uh, what we learned again, and, uh, replacing Santa Fe Trail. Um, that's, that's going to significantly save, uh, time in the, uh, design process. Um, and also saves, uh, uh, dollars. Um, generally, a new, uh, construction set of drawings is five to five and a half percent. And what you're seeing before you is about a three point six percent, um, to, uh, uh, adj, site adapt, uh, the design. Uh, more importantly, it will, it's gonna save, um, uh, upwards of s, uh, six months in the, in the schedule and the design schedule, which is a six percent times a forty-five million dollar hard construction cost, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion for seven point zero one through seven point zero eight.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes. All right, on to action. Other, it'd probably be easiest if we just take these one at a time. So if no one has any questions on one, if I could hit a motion?
I'd move to appoint Dr. Jim McMullen as extended-term, long-term suspension expulsion appeal hearing officer, KSA seven-two dash six-one-one-seven C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliff, who won that. Mr. Kuhn?
I, I think Brad won it.
What's that? Brad, what's that?
Brad.
Mr. Boyd?
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Congratulations, Jim.
We tried the Eeny Meeny Miney Bo, but they told us we had to actually put your name on it.
All right, so eight point zero two. Shannon gets to read it again, maybe?
Uh, yeah, I'd move to approve the recommended student fees, miscellaneous charges, and facility rental, complex fees for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Wickliff, second by Ms. Felter?
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
All right, on to eight point zero three, are there any questions on those motions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a couple of questions.
Okay, I assume that'll be Mr. Hutchinson?
Mr. Hutchinson. So the documents provided to us currently are blank, and I just want to make sure, I want to ask and have you articulate what the total dollars of our bond that was just approved, two hundred ninety-eight point three million, is expecting for our, what is it, I couldn't see the number? What's the number of dollars we're expecting to ask the board to approve today for sale?
Two hundred ninety-eight point three, it's a, uh, it's the makeup of whether, how much of that will be, um, taxable bonds versus tax-exempt bonds. Uh, we, um, we're asking permission to go as high as a hundred million dollars of taxable bonds or to do them all in tax-exempt, kind of based on, um, where the rates are. And there's some, uh, advantages that are outlined as far as, uh, why taxable and, or tax-exempt. In addition, um, there's a re, uh, there's some, uh, authorization, um, if we, for refunding on an existing bond, two thousand sixteen B, uh, that the market, actually, conditions got even better again today. Uh, that if we can exceed two point five million dollars of savings, uh, that we could, um, proceed with that placement with the, uh, board president's signature. So, uh, so that would increase, I guess, the total amount you're authorizing, but the, the new bond piece is two ninety-eight point three.
So, can I ask how we had board meetings in which I asked the questions in January and February before the elections took place, and I asked for clarification, I said, am I sh, correct? In that, any purchase over twenty thousand dollars will be presented to this board if the bond approved, right?
Good.
For sale at the point in time that it was necessary and needed. And I was assured by Dr. Jaeger and the board that, no, we are not approving the sale of those bonds right away, it may take two, three, four, or five years for us to issue those bonds and sell those. But now, less than thirty-five days later, after the sale, we're gonna go back to the community and say, we're selling them all, not what we said we were gonna do, but we're gonna sell them all, so we have cash flow flexibility. So we're not really following through with what we promised.
I think the number one promise, though, um, was to make sure that the levy does not increase above where it is today. And we're going to achieve that by trying to, uh, restrict interest rate risk. The world has changed even since we started talking about the bond issue, and our concern is interest rates are getting ready to take off. If we wait two, three years to sell another segment of the bonds, we could be facing a much higher interest rate and not fulfill that promise. Therefore, we're recommending that we sell them all now. If it never rises, and those taxable bonds come at a little higher cost right now, we can refinance them down to tax-exempt. But that, that's the main promise, is do not, we will not let that levy go up. And the, it, the board could choose not to do this, and we can only sell a portion of them, but we face that risk, that's what, that's why, uh, we're trying to explain the interest rate. That's why even looking at taxable bonds.
The, the, the other piece that we need to be very clear about is, by state statute, we have to bring anything over twenty thousand dollars to the board. So there is absolutely no way, shape, or form of a blank checkbook that would give the district the opportunity to say, we're just gonna go procure three hundred million dollars, spend three hundred million dollars. Anything that's over twenty thousand dollars comes to the board, and that's what I said time or time again during this process. Is that that would continue to come, the board would be continued to be involved in the spending of it, just like the replacement of technology that's on here tonight. Um, that's a commitment that, that, that we have to make legally to our Board of Education. Um, and that's how the board has oversight, so if we would say to our, our board, we would like you to approve, you know, three million dollars for this, and you say no, that three million dollars sits there until you authorize us to do something else. So, um, I think we have to be careful a little bit about saying a promise to our community that wasn't kept, because the promise always is, anything over twenty thousand dollars per state statute goes in front of our Board of Education, and, and that's our commitment. The reason why we're in the place having this conversation tonight is because as we work with Piper Sandler and Dustin Avi, who has worked with our district for a long time and knows about all of our current situated bond issues that we have out there that we're paying back, but also is well aware of, you know, the, the approval and passage of our most recent bond. He's watching the, the market for us and trying to advise us the best way to do it, the, the, the likelihood is, you know, there's a possibility that if we get bonds at a low interest rate, that we may earn some interest off some of those bonds even, that can help us take our bond dollars farther than we think we could. That's why this is before the board tonight, um, like John said, if the board doesn't authorize that, then obviously we come back with a different plan and work that way. But, you know, over the last number of years, how many, and I'm looking at Dustin and John both, you know, by Dustin looking at the bond market, paying attention to what's happening in the bond market, we've saved almost forty million dollars in the last, how many years?
Uh, since two thousand thirteen.
Since two thousand thirteen, and so, part of it is, we have to also rely on the experts in the field in terms of when it's best to sell bonds, when it's best to refinance bonds, but none of that check takes away the authority the board has for our school district, our administration to spend money related to the bonds.
So I have a quick question for you, so in the bond meetings, there was a discussion about, I'll call it the Lindenwood property?
Yes.
That it was stated that the board approved purchase, uh, an allocation of five million dollars to purchase that, and that with the sale of the bond, the bond would pay back that five million dollars.
Correct.
Am I still correct? Does that five million dollars become available to the district to be offset the twenty million dollars lost this year, or the projected deficit for next year? Do we have that five million dollars go back to, say, some teachers' jobs, some classified staff jobs? Are we committing that they're gonna, we're gonna take the money and move it back doing what, what we, what we should be doing within the district?
Has to be moved back to capital outline, which will not assist with teacher salaries. It can assist with purchases of equipment, it can, it could handle custodial maintenance technology salaries, which are already in there, but it can't go to operating funds, it has to go back to a capital source.
Good answer.
And so dovetailing on his question, he implies we're not keeping our promises, this is routine strategy, isn't it, to keep the mill levy flat, it, it's not usurping anything, it's not, um, you know, cloak and dagger, this is doing what's best for our community based on the authority they granted to us, and everything up to twenty thousand will be approved, after twenty thousand will be approved by this board.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and if you look at, you know, our, our history as a school district, as we've opened facilities, as we've spent bond dollars around construction, we bring change orders to the Board of Education, and, you know, sometimes those change orders are two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars, um, I will tell you that we've erred on the side of sharing more publicly in our history as a district than we probably had to, and, uh, there would be no reason why in any of the projects related to this bond that we wouldn't continue to do that. Um, we believe a lot in public accountability for the public's money, um, and that's why it's important to us that we do make those, those commitments that our, our public has trusted us with, and trusted you all with.
The reason I'm asking is, it's our job, and if anyone's feelings are hurt because I'm asking questions, I don't mean to hurt your feelings, but we have an obligation. I agree with, and I'm very pleased with, selling, refinancing the old bonds to save money, I think you said the other day, several million dollars we saved refinancing, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of getting the lowest rates we can possibly get for the bonds, I'm not against that, right? I'm also not in, you know, not against taking and being careful and judicious with what's actually allocatable in the next three years, which was the tax-exempt bonds, and you helped explain that the day, there was money that we had to commit, there was so much time, the other ones have to be taxed. So I appreciate you educating me on that, I can't, I claim to know all that, but in transparency, again, giving context for our decisions, I felt I needed to open that conversation up, so that people don't come back and say, well, what did y'all say? And what we said is, we're gonna make, and with the layout that just articulated is, we're gonna make good decisions, um, that will save the budget, that will help us do the thing, that will still be accountable, right? But, you know.
Mr. Connell, the, the part that I struggle with, and I'm probably taking a little leap here, is the insinuation that our staff is being dishonest, that is not the case here, and, and that's, and, 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 and that's why I, and that's why I was quick to speak up, because our, our staff works tirelessly on behalf of this community and this Board of Education to make sure that they get these things right, that we fulfill promises, um, I just wanted to tell you, that's why I, I jumped in and, and spoke so quickly.
Well, and can I add, Mr. Connell, that if you knew the context of why this was happening, why did you frame it like we were a bait and switch, and, I mean, you, you knew that that wasn't the case, didn't you?
I was told in our three-v- threes, if I have comments, that it's before the board to bring it before the board, you coached me the exact same way, that if I have a conversation or conflict with anything, then I could bring it to the full board, to bring my concerns and my words to the board, so, since you and I have been talking since I got on the board, is, my job is to ask those questions. I'm not here with you that seven years ago, right?
No, but this has to do with how you say what you say, and the implication was that we were dishonest, I resent it.
I didn't say those words, but if, if, you know, if you're defensive about it, I appreciate that.
Luckily, we can look back and see, so, how you say what you say matters, and your credibility, every time you do something like that is eroded.
And you're now accusing my credibility, and my credibility says, you guys keep saying, get on the damn team, and I'm not on the damn team, I was voted to the board, pardon my language, but I'm gonna, I've got texts from y'all, emails from y'all, I'm not on your team.
You're on Team Alatha, the whole.
I'm on everybody's team, and we all have obligations.
How you say what you say matters.
I think it would be best, I think it would be best to stop this conversation.
I may be inarticulate, I may be inarticulate, but by golly, you ought to know exactly where I'm coming from, and not all of y'all were in my three-v- threes, and we didn't all hear exactly the same thing, and I'm finding out from Dr. Jaeger, that I'm not always hearing exactly the same things, we're all talking to him, I'm trying to understand, because at the end of the day, I'm as accountable as six other people on this board for leading these people who do their job every day for us.
Okay, any other questions about the bond?
No, it's just, I appreciate Mr. Hutchison and his team and Mr. Avi's work, uh, on this and saving us, um, countless dollars over the years, so I appreciate the, the strategy and the knowledge that we don't have, so, um, with that, I would, oh, I'm sorry.
I sent it out.
Oh, um, I guess I'm motion man.
Yep, we are.
So I would move to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation school bonds, series twenty-twenty-two A and twenty-twenty-two B of Unified School District Number Two Three Three, Johnson County, Kansas, Alatha, providing for the levying collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith as presented.
Second.
Mr. Boyd, thank you by Mr. Wickliff.
I'm backwards again, man.
Why you keep doing that? Motion by Mr. Wickliff, thank you by Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
All right.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing and providing for the sale, issuance, and delivery of taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty-twenty-two C of Unified School District Number Two Three Three, Johnson County, Kansas, Alatha, for the purpose of providing funds to refund a portion of the issuer's outstanding general obligation bonds, providing for the levying and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliff, thank you by Ms. Felter.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff.
Yes.
All right, and on to future action items, did anyone have any questions on those, nine point zero one through nine point seventeen?
I do have a question on nine point one seven, um, with the K A S B renewal, what all is included with that renewal? I know the trainings, things like that.
Legal counsel.
Do you want to take that question?
Uh, I would be happy to start, and then, and then somebody else, but, um, there, there's a lot of pieces that come with it, um, some of them that you all experienced as new board members, so training and onboarding, those kinds of things that come with it, um, we also get access to their experts across the field of education, so that goes from, uh, legal counsel to also people who have expertise in curriculum and navigating educational issues, um, varieties of training through the year, um, you know, training for the board clerk to make sure she, um, knows the, the law and, and what she needs to do with that, um, they provide annual negotiations, training for our team here in Alatha, which is a statutory requirement, um, they assist us with that, one of the things that they do that helps us a lot is they, um, look at our board policies on a pretty frequent basis when we have question, uh, they compare that to state statute, case law, um, newest things coming out, um, they also provide training to our staff, um, in the last couple of years, there's been, uh, several different, um, changes to, um, national level, uh, legal issues that impact school districts, so, um, they're able to come and train our staff, work with our principals primarily, um, those who oversee other people, that's a lot of times what that is, um, but it's really an organization that's, that's at our beck and call, um, for lack of a better term, to support the, the work that we do as educators. Uh, the other piece that's really important about that is they're connected with the school districts and Board of Educations across the state of Kansas, and so a lot of times, uh, we're able to reach out to them, both as staff but also you as board members, and say, here's something I'm thinking about, here's something I have a question about, is there someone else I should talk to, so, a lot of times, they're a, a point of contact for those things as well, um, they also pay attention to legislative issues happening in the State House, um, let us know, um, you know, this is one you might want to pay attention to, and provide some input, and both in a positive way and in a questioning way sometimes, so they're, they're helpful that way as well, um, when we're pressed at times, um, to find principal candidates, um, you know, it's not a formal thing that they necessarily do, but we reach out to them and say, we're looking for a six-day high school principal, um, do you have anybody you suggest that we contact and we work with? Because certainly we're familiar with the people in our area, but they have a good sense of what's happening, uh, both regionally across the state, but even in the Midwest, you know, through their contacts and things like that, so, there's a lot of things that, um, we, we call on them to help and support us with, ongoing board training, um, they always have that, um, you know, they're, they're a group that, uh, we can, you know, if the board says, you know, Dr. Jaeger, we would like some training on, um, policy development, they would come in and do that for us, those kinds of things, so, and, and it's what they do all day, every day, so it's a high level of expertise that they offer in those areas.
I have a question for the board, when, just understanding what, when future action items, those are things that we will address and vote on in future meetings, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
That particular one, the K A S B has a date on the invoice of March eighth, when do we anticipate that that vote of whether or not, that, that invoice, I assume, has not been paid?
It, no, it, it has not been paid, and we won't pay it until the board would approve it, so, at, at the very earliest date, it would be at our next regularly scheduled board meeting.
As it relates to that, as with the concerns voiced by one of the board members several months ago, and the relationship with N S B A, their letters, has anyone addressed the K A S B in negotiating at least a reduced rate? Has that been proposed or identified in any way, shape, or form concerning the objection? So we had to, while there's some value to the relationship, the price.
Are you asking, has anyone negotiated a reduced rate with K A S B based on something N S B A you, that you disagree with?
The money the K A S B goes also to N S B A, so there is a.
It, it doesn't, there's a separate, separate invoice that we get for N S B A, um, that will likely be here in the next couple of months as well.
Fully separate.
Fully separate, correct.
So I'm simply asking, has anyone even asked the K A S B if there's, if that's the best rate and how it's identified? Because I was, I was understanding that the bill was more than this, and so it does appear to be about six thousand dollars less than what I had understood it was probably going to be, so I'm just asking, is this a better rate?
They, they base, they base it on student enrollment, it's the same piece for every district in the state of Kansas that belongs, it's based on the number of kids on your September twentieth count, and ours is lower than it has been, and so that's probably why you see an adjustment there.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yep. So I just wanted to add something real quick, uh, Mr. Kuhn also, um, you know, what K A S B does, there was an issue probably three or four years ago that I was really struggling with, a vote that we took, and I called K A S B staff, and, I mean, they talked to me for as long as I wanted to talk about the issue, so, did, I know you mentioned that, but, you know, I've, I've actually seen it happen, and on, you know, it's very helpful to know that we can go to, you know, experts in the field, so, just wanted to add that. Any other questions on future action items?
I do have one question on nine point one-five, um, I know it's a future action, and, and tell me if it hap, the, given that one of our board, does the board member move out of the. I will recuse myself, Mr. Connell.
Yeah, he does.
That's what I just wanted to ask, I wasn't pointing that out, just asking a question.
All right, on to ten, information written, we have our Head Start Director's Report, um, and we also have the information on the parent-teacher conference totals for the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, and then we are on to topics of discussion for board members.
If I may, just real quick, um, Dr. Reeves is the one that works on our parent-teacher conference totals, and as you may imagine, that is a beast with the district with almost thirty thousand kids, so, uh, that was an opportunity he was assigned quickly on when, when he moved to the education center, so I just want to thank him for doing that, so, it's great information, but it, it's significant as you can imagine.
There was a question, I had a question, in the middle school numbers, California Trails numbers for total number of teacher conferences was significantly smaller but still showed a forty-three percent, did they just report their information differently?
So, the reporting for middle school and high school with the.
Yeah, please.
Come on, Tim.
Reporting for, I'm in trouble now, um, the reporting for the middle school and high school is a little bit different because of the, um, the, the timeframe that we allow conferences to occur and the different formats, so the methods that have been used at the middle school and high school are a little bit different in how we collect, and so, one of the middle schools is reporting a percentage of students versus, um, it's just a difference in how they're, how they're reporting, so, um, it's a little bit harder to do when you have the opportunity to do a Zoom conference, to do a phone conference, an in-person conference, and do it across, uh, four days as opposed to the, the assigned, uh, what, what is previously been like the Wednesday and Thursday night, um, and that has to do with, you know, you go to conferences for your daughter, and you've got seven teachers, you might get to five, you might get to seven, you might get to two, you might only go to one, um, and how they've reported that in the past is a little bit different, and now we collect that information from teachers directly, about how many conferences they actually conduct, so it looks a little bit different.
I did, um, I had commented about it, but it was interesting is that I posted on Facebook an open-ended question, amazing, amazing attendance percentages at the elementary school, and so I asked, what happened? When we get to middle school, and the numbers average moved from ninety-something to thirty-one percent, and there were some feedback, I didn't know if you were getting them from, or had asked the staff themselves, um, happy to share some of those, the, the, the emails that they sent me directly, but there were some concerns of how it was organized and structured differently this year, um, but I, I, I just don't know the answer, but I mean, thirty-one percent at the high school, middle school, I mean, that, it's like, we talk about it all the time, it's like, how do we get engagement as they get older? And it's like, wow, this really represents a gap in our connectedness with the school and the community.
So some of the feedback that I think, I, I've received, not, not, you know, I, I can't specifically say it's elementary, middle, or high school, but, um, and from teachers in general, is that the flexibility has made it more available to some, because we have parents that don't have to leave work now, they can Zoom for twenty minutes.
And that's a good thing.
From an office, and so I think there's, there's some, some, the flexibility has provided more access for some families, um, the in-person part of that is something that has always been, um, heavily attended at, at elementary, that's just, um, that's just, the elementary numbers have always been a little bit higher.
Do we know how this trends from pre-pandemic, I mean, I know this, I'm just looking at, maybe y'all watch it every year, I don't know, right? But, is there any, is this trending better, is this trending worse, is it about the same it's been for?
Elementary's pretty consistent, pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, whether it was virtual or not, um, because of how we collect the data for middle school and high school, it's a little bit different, I think some of the other nuances to, to the secondary piece are that parents have access to, um, the electronic, the electronic reading book, Student View, all the time, and so, um, they know whether work's being turned in, they know what their kid's grades are when they log in and look at it, uh, and I think it just looks, it just looks a little bit, a little bit different, not that they're not interested, I think they're just showing interest in other ways, it just doesn't happen to maybe always be sitting across from, sitting across from teachers.
That's fair.
It's something we've always, I, I think we've always worked on it, and I think our secondary people constantly are talking with their staff and, um, and parents, and, and trying to find ways to encourage parents to, to engage and, and be there, so, and oftentimes your kids help you do that, too, I, that's, that's, my kids were the ones that rattled me a little bit to make sure I was part of that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for helping.
Yep.
All right, board comments?
Yep, I have a comment, um, I don't know if everybody had a chance to, to see today, but we, uh, witnessed a historic moment, um, for our country in general, but specifically for, I believe the, the kids in our system, um, Judge Katanji Brown Jackson was confirmed to the highest court in our land, and I hope that, you know, the kids are product of public schools, right? So I hope that the kids in our district, you know, are able to see themselves in her and aspire to, you know, reach that level if that's their dream, but, um, we had another, um, ceiling that was cracked today, um, so, um, and then, so that was the first one, then secondly, um, as I sit here as a board member, um, I am really aware of the perception, um, that can come when you're in a position, position of leadership, right? And what that looks like and what that's supposed to look like, and I can only hope that, you know, the kids in our district, our staff, our parents, our community stakeholders, you know, see in me what they would like to see, um, somebody representing them every day. All set.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
I do, yeah, thanks, I, I wanted to bring to everybody's awareness that right now the seven days experience is going on, and, uh, it's a movement that came out of the April twenty-fourteenth, um, events when a white supremacist. murdered three Kansas City people because of his hate for Jews. Two families in our community joined hands and hearts to shine the light on the darkness of hate. And what they did was they set up the seven days initiative and you can look it up, sevendays.org. And it's seven days of a theme, things like joy and love and others and discovery and it's all goodness, you know? There's a few buttons I put out on the table that they provided the city that I thought some people might want to know. But it starts on April the thirteenth and I encourage our district families to look into that. I wanted to give a shout out to all the teachers for parent teacher conferences, all the building folks that work so hard to make it happen because ninety-two percent at elementary, I mean, those critical early years, it's, it's so important. And early childhood through fifth grade, it was eighty-nine percent attended during, still a pandemic. So shout out and thank you for that. And then I wanted to recognize Kim Sill and her team at Head Start. We just recently did a Head Start Federal Review and that they hold the purse strings and the authority to make sure those services continue. And she just always hits a home run. She's so detail oriented and it's all for the kids. So I'm grateful for that. And one last bit of info that many in our community may not know is that the library, the Alatha Library is hosting a prom expo at Mahaffey Stagecoach, Stagecoach Stop in Farms Heritage Center. It's going to be this Saturday on April the ninth. And they even have a handful of free prom dresses. They're having vendors that can do makeup demonstrations, talk about formal wear, flowers, limousines, it's kind of cool. And when I saw that, I'm like, I've got to share that. So that's, you look that up, alathalibrary.org. That's it.
Mr. Connell?
So I wanted to remind the community that we do have two pretty big, important meetings coming up. They're public access. Alatha South on the twelfth is an open meeting for anyone, anybody in the community. Come learn more about the budget, budget process. Not sure of the exact format, but being present is important. On the nineteenth, it's Tuesday, the twelfth, on the nineteenth, Alatha East will be a safety and security open session. A lot of y'all have sent us emails and feedback of what you'd like to have and what you think. And, you know, I think it'd be really important to hear what our teams are doing to keep your kids safe and, and, and learn, right? Cause we all sit back. And with that in mind, I want to make sure that I remind everybody that while the public comment meeting is on videotape and it is moved to five, your showing up matters. Cause in this country, in this world where we advocate so much of what we do to others, you still need to stand up, you still have to fight, but we have to fight for everybody, not just a special interest. We need to, for the teachers, for the staff, for the parents, for the community, for the school, for the kids. You need to keep coming up. I will remind everybody that while we may be contentious up here and that's what we do, that's what you asked us to do. So that's my two cents.
All right, I was gonna go on the fly here and say something that I'm sure I'm gonna get creamed by the cesspool that is social media, but I don't get on social media, so I don't care. You know, we heard a lot about transparency tonight and the board not listening. And I promise you that the board listens. We've done that for two years. We don't always agree. We didn't always agree as a board. There were a lot of four, three votes, five, two votes during the whole pandemic, but the whole time we listened. Okay? We, we weren't just shut off, we were listening to everyone. There was no decision that we would have made for the last two years that was going to make everyone happy. We were going to tick off one side or the other every single decision. So we are listening, staff is listening. That's our entire job is listening. I spent thousands of hours of my time reading and responding to emails, listening to public comments, and I am happy to do it. That's what I'm here for, but we do listen. The other thing is on transparency. Our staff works their butt off to be transparent. I don't know any other government. I mean, you go up to the federal government, you want to talk about transparency? Everything we do is right on this screen and everyone can see it. Every vote we take, every dollar that we spend is on here for everyone to see all the time. If you have questions, you can ask our staff. Dr. Jaeger, Mr. Allison, they spent hours and hours with people who were mad at them about things. They were transparent, they were listening. So I just, I, I want to, I want to get that out there. We are listening, we are transparent. Everything that you see here is what we are doing. When we take votes, we don't, clearly we don't go behind the scenes. We look like a mess sometimes. We don't know what our emotions are supposed to be. It's because we're doing it in front of the public. We don't go behind the scenes, work up a perfect motion, find out if we got four votes and vote on it. We do it right here in front of everyone. So I just want everyone to know that's transparency. So that's my soapbox for the day. Onto Dr. Jaeger.
All set.
Follow that.
Yeah. Seriously. Well, follow the whole meeting. So, you know, I want to focus on some positive things for, for a minute and then talk about some more serious things. But you may or may not know that this week is the week of the young child. We had the amazing opportunity in this building yesterday to have kids from Harmony Early Childhood Center come through here and spread their love and their joy. And we tried to return that, but they were helping us a lot more than we were helping them. But it was, it was amazing to see those three and four-year-olds in our building with amazing caring staff members. They came in singing and chanting, chanting for harmony, harmony. It was, it was just, it was amazing to see that happen and it was just great. It was just great. So, you know, every, every time I get a little stressed about what's happening in our world and the really heavy things, it seems like kids are placed at the right time in front of me for me to realize, you know what, this is what it's all about. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a number of kids protesting in front of our building one evening and I walked out in front of, out of the building that night. It was about seven o'clock, it was later in the evening. And I thought to myself, like my initial instinct was to go talk to those kids because they're Alatha kids and I'm their superintendent and I love our Alatha kids. But I paused for a minute and I thought to myself, is this going to become something that I'm assassinated for on public media or social media? Or is this going to become an issue? Because I'm going out and talking to these Alatha kids who happen to be standing in front of the building I work in. And wherever we are on the political spectrum and what we agree and what we don't agree about, I walked out like a million ton bricks that day and thought to myself, that's what our educators are going through every single day. And the same thing happened to me. And I'm gonna be honest, I'm angry about it because I love this school district. Our staff is here because they love this school district. We may not all agree all the time and that is our right in the United States of America. But for me or any other staff member in this school to question whether or not they should go up and talk to some of our students, it's time for us to do some things different. So we can have discourse, we can have disagreements, we can do all of that. That's important because that's feedback that we need to have. But the feeling I had that day was a feeling of fear. And I will tell you, that's a feeling that this staff has every single day right now, from the custodian to the superintendent, and that is wrong. There are people all over this system have chosen to be in this place because they love this place. And we have to figure out how to come together so our staff doesn't operate in fear. Because regardless of what anybody says, that is not good for our kids. We have a staff that every single day, if somebody asks a teacher, why did you do this? How do you feel about this? They will absolutely share that. Our principals will do the same, I will do the same. But this constant assassination of public education in our school district is killing our system. And I sat here for a long time tonight thinking, do I say it? Do I not say it? Because the, the frank reality of it is, is I'm probably being political by saying this. But the truth is, is I love this place and this place has thousands and thousands and thousands of people who choose to be here because they love this place. So we need to model that love for our community. We need to model that love for our kids. That's the most important thing we can do right now. You know, every time I read, see, read research about people walking out of the door because they choose to, it's because of the stress of the job that's happening right now. There is a political narrative about publication, public education in the world. Some of it may be right, some of it may be wrong. I don't know. But what I do know is Alatha. And our community knows Alatha. And so I just ask that we finish this year in a way that shows dignity and respect for each other. When there's questions, go to your school, talk to your school, talk to your teachers, talk to your principals, talk to district administration, talk to your board members. And at the end of all that, if you're not happy with what happens, go to social media. But we are really good at working with people and we're committed to doing that. But for any of us to feel like we can't walk out of the ed center, a classroom, any of those things because of what's happening in the world and the superintendent feels like he can't go talk to kids, that's a problem. For the record, I did. And, and it was my very favorite part of my day. They were amazing young people who are advocates and committed. And that's so admirable. We need kids like that in the world. And I had a great conversation with them and I got home and I told my wife, I said, gosh, the part of my day that I had to pause and think about became my very favorite part of my day. So I, I just, that's on my heart. That's what's on my heart tonight. So I just wanted you to hear that. The other thing that's on my heart tonight is our budget alignment. Man, has that been hard. You know, it, it has been hard, it's taken a toll on everybody in this system and it hurts. It hurts. You know, it took us a long time to get to the point we are today. Some of it, we knew was coming, lots of it, we didn't. And it's a direct result of the pandemic we've been living in. You know, there are three buckets of money in Kansas that we have very specified things that we could do with those amounts of money. And so as Mr. Connell said a minute ago, I ask our community to attend that meeting. If we don't have room, we'll schedule another one. It's important to us that people have the facts and the understanding of what's happening and why it's happening. There are a lot of constraints on public education, public school districts, excuse me, in Kansas about how that has to go. So I really appreciate anybody that will show up and do that. And I suspect we're not going to have time to answer everybody's question as they raise them. Maggie and her team have worked on some ways that we can get all the questions. We'll answer as many as we can that night, but we'll also be starting an FAQ page. Because again, we don't have any, anything to hide from our community in relation to that. So we'll definitely be working on that and really do appreciate people coming. And then Mr. Connell also mentioned the school safety night.